Okay, we'll start the meeting off. You want to stand and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We thank everybody for coming tonight. Hopefully you've all had your opportunity to sign in our little sign-in sheet out front. If you have a cellphone, we have that you have that turned off so we don't get interrupted. And the fire exits are marked. And can we have a roll call?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Here.
Melanie Mar.
Here.
Alan B.
Here.
Brett Baker.
Here.
Matt Fabro.
Here.
And can we have a motion from one of the board members to approve that the meeting was advertised and required?
Yep.
Roll call vote on that.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
And can we have a motion to approve minutes from last month's meeting and waive the reading of those minutes? Second it. And roll call vote on that.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
And just to make a housekeeping statement is that we only have a very small board tonight. So a lot of the items that were on the agenda, we will go through them, but they're not going to actually be voted on tonight. So just let you all know that. And go to old business with Alan.
Yep. So Mr. Chairman, first order tonight is a request for an extension. Appeal number two one zero six, dated July ninth, twenty twenty four, from Zach Bordeaux, twenty four Monroe Lane. Mr. Bordeaux would like to request a sixty day extension be added to the continuation that was granted on July ninth, twenty twenty four, in order to obtain a survey of the property and acquire further information from NICE regarding potential easements on the property.
And I don't see any problem with that. We'll open public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody here like to speak to that matter? Not see anybody, but close the public hearing portion of the meeting and have a motion to approve a sixty day extension for Mr. Bordeaux. And show hands and roll call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
All right, and into new business then. Well, actually it's a more old business.
Yes. So, we have appeal number two three two zero, working in Resupsey and nine point five drive. It's an area variance. The device requests to be allowed to place twelve by twenty eight feet of shed in front yard in the front yard, which is not meet thirty feet front air setback in nine one residential district, encouraging fourteen point six feet into the roadside front air setback, the fifteen point four feet front line. He's requesting a continuation.
All right, uh, open the public hearing portion of that meeting and anybody here like to speak to that? That will just goes up and grant the continuation. Anybody have anything?
I have an objection to the variance.
Okay.
I'm against it.
Please state your name, sir.
Uh, Roger Hammernick. Uh, I own the property, uh, just a short distance away.
Okay.
And the whole area of the neighborhood is changing character, especially the north end. It's become almost commercialized. Uh, and, uh, it's going to change the character of that whole part of the street, in my opinion.
Okay.
So I'm against it.
All right.
Thank you.
You got that okay? Close the public hearing portion of the meeting and somebody want to have, make a motion to grant that continuation?
I can't hear.
One second.
Okay, sorry.
Show hands and roll call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Mr. Chairman, are you making motions for?
For the continuation.
Okay. So all, all these are going to continue to next month, so we don't have to do a continuation for them. So you don't, you don't have to vote on, all we're doing is
Well, that's what
You're doing a public hearing. Is that what you got on there, continuation for all of them?
Yeah, well, we need
For all the, all the ones that are pushing to next month?
Mm-hmm.
You had them doing a continuation for each one of them?
I didn't necessarily have that. I mean, I had them shown on there, but
Yeah, so
I thought we were just doing public hearing.
No, because we, because we asked them, they didn't, they didn't ask for the continuation. We asked them if they wanted to be pushed to next month, so
All right.
Just have to talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, if, if this one here, if we told him, you know, you have thirty days to come back and he came back with thirty days, there would be a continuation. Is that what the case is there? Or?
I, just like with all of them, I told them that we had limited board
Yeah.
and gave them the opportunity if they wanted to wait until next month, where we expect to have a full board.
So for the ones forward?
But we had already voiced everything.
You don't have to vote, you don't have to vote on pushing them off till next month for any of them.
So I just open and close the public hearing?
Okay. So just want to pass on to the audience, so he said in the, in the very beginning, there's only three that we're actually going to hear and vote on. The first one, not this one, the one previous to this, was the first one. We have two other ones, one on Trade Road, one on Le Bear Street. Everything else, they're not voting on tonight, okay? It's going to be voted on next month, but we advertise a public hearing, so if you're here for a public hearing for any of those, you're welcome to stay and voice your opinion and they'll take that as part of the record. Okay? It's still going to have another public hearing again next month, but you may not be available next month and only available this month, so you can give it, you know, this month if you like. So it's up to, up to you, but there will be a public hearing for everything, but not everything's going to be voted on tonight, okay?
All right. Next one.
So the next order we have is appeal number two three one eight, for Brian Yelalovich, Katy Bellato and Truck Sales, nineteen thirty three Route three. It's a use variance, request to be allowed in operator car sales, and all of their business, which is not allowed, which is not in a lot of use in an MC neighborhood, commercial district.
Is it, so is anybody here from the public, that was here for the public hearing for this matter? Do, would you like to speak on it tonight, next month, or? I just, the only thing I want to advise you, there's three members of the board here now, there will likely be more members of the board here next month. So whatever you say to the members of the board, these members will obviously hear, I can guarantee you that the members coming next month will go back and listen to what you've said tonight. Before they vote, just as
Okay.
Proceed.
Before you, so before you speak, we're going to present the project.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so We're, we're going to present the whole project and then you come up to, you speak. That way you can see everything that we've got, okay?
So, here's an aerial view, nineteen thirty three Route three. This is the proposed site. This is Dollar General. Three seventy four comes into Route three right here. You'll see that it's in DNC District right here. This is a little closer aerial view. You can see that this is still Dollar General over here. A lot lines here. There is a lot of state. He's been here. That's a view of it today from the Route three side. This is a view of it today from Gatto roadside. And this is the proposed plot plan from Mr. Yelalovich.
Okay, sir.
If you want to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing portion of the meeting now. If you want to step up to the mic and state your name and you make your comments.
Benson Brock. I live at one sixty three Gatto Road and, uh, the old golf station looks terrible sitting right there. And any improvement that we can make to that lot, including having a used car dealership there, would be a huge improvement. There was a repair facility which was right across the road from there.
Right.
And he recently shut down within the last year and a half when he sold the place, so a repair facility would be an excellent addition to the Katyville area, so since we don't have any gas stations or anything around there, uh, a lot of people could use maybe a repair facility. And, and a car dealership, I think he would make a big improvement to that facility, so I'd like to see it.
You're in favor of that?
Yes, I'm most definitely in favor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak to that matter? And if not, we will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and go on to the next one.
So for our next matter, there are two appeal numbers, one will be a use variance, the second will be an area variance. Twenty five Genesee Lane versus a use variance, request it to be allowed to construct a thirty six by thirty structure to house horses, which is not allowed and which is not in a lot of use in an R three residential district. Would you like to deal?
Yeah, go ahead, we can.
Okay, all right. And second appeal number is two three two five. It is the area variance. Request, uh, request for a primary structure of one thousand one hundred eighty nine square feet to be allowed to place a third accessory structure, thirty six by thirty, which is one thousand eighty square feet, having a total accessory square footage of one thousand two hundred forty four in the rear yard. It is larger than one hundred percent of the principal building size, which is not allowed in an R three residential district. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter tonight?
Just raise your hands. I'm sure there are a few of you.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll go through the details. This is Cumberland Head Road here. This is Plattsburgh Bay. This is where twenty five Genesee Lane is located within Champlain Park. This property has also been merged with this thirteen acre parcel, which has access to Genesee Lane down here further on the corner. So the home is here. It has been merged with this property and access to the road right there. It is all within the R three district. You can see it in the light blue color. This is an aerial view of the home with the property adjacent behind it. This is the park that the town owns. This is a view from Genesee Lane of the home. This is a view from further down the road where the access to the adjacent thirteen acres that have been merged is. This is an aerial view from the tax map. Again, you have the property with the proposed barn site here, thirteen acres with the access over here in the corner. This is the plot plan provided by, this is It's all yours, Mr. Hale.
We will open the public hearing portion of the meeting up. Anybody here like to speak to this matter? You can step up to the mic and let us know. And again, we'll be voting on this tonight in Austin for information.
My name is Michelin Hul. I live at four nineteen Cumberland Head Road, which is like my backyard butts up with that piece of property. Um, I am totally against it. We went through this fifteen years ago when the same people put pigs back there. We were inundated with flies. My neighbor came to me and was saying, thinking that we were having septic problems because he was inundated with flies. And I was like, no. And I said, we couldn't sit in our backyard. We had a pool back then. We couldn't sit back there without being bothered by the flies. Um, the thing that concerns me is even with just all the rain that we had this past weekend, they run off. And if there's going to be horses there, there's going to be a pile of manure. It's all going to run off. The way the property is, it all funnels towards my house and my neighbor's house and who's even lower than me. So he's going to have even more contaminated water running through our backyards, uh, or through our, our homes. And we have a ditch. And even today, as I was leaving tonight, that ditch is still full of water from the rain that we had this past weekend. So, um, it just, it, it, to me, it's going to be like an interfering with my quality of life, our quality of life, just because of the flies. Where is it going to stop? Is it going to stop at four horses? I don't know. Is there going to be a donkey there? Is there going to be chickens, roosters, pigs? I, who knows? You know, so, um, I'm just worried about our quality of life being compromised as it was fifteen years ago when we were back here fighting against that fifteen years ago.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Step up to the mic and state your name for us.
Hi, I'm Amy Mountcastle, thirteen Genesee Lane. I guess I don't feel we have quite enough information, um, in terms of the plans. And in principle, I don't object to having horses there. There's a precedent for that, just in, you know, in the park already with the Titherington property. You know, I'd be interested in knowing some, you know, getting some details on where the, where the barn's going to be located and producing and that kind of thing.
That will happen most likely at next month's meeting when we have full board and they would be here to be able to address their plans.
I mean, my feeling is that the property owners ought to have a right to, you know, do something with that land other than just mow the lawn, which is a costly endeavor these days. Um, and, you know, alternatives to having, um, and I don't know how many horses we're talking about. Are we talking about twenty five horses or are we talking about two horses? So this makes, this is a big question too. But, you know, in principle, I think that the area is, you know, has that rural feel. It's, it's a very large parcel. It's sitting there empty, not doing anything for, um, the owners. They're very generous in letting the neighbors, my house, my yard butts that field, you know, go into the field. I know people plant gardens there, so they've been very generous and supportive of the, of the neighborhood, so in principle, I do support the idea, but I'd like more details.
All right, thank you.
Just to answer your question, that, so the way the process works is they went sketch plan review to the planning department, which there's no public hearing for. Then they have to come to us to actually, if the use isn't allowed, to get a use variance. If it's granted, then they go back to the planning department for what they call a detailed plan, all the information you're going to want. Then there's a public hearing for that one, for there. So, you know, I can tell you, you know, based off the ordinance, you know, thirteen acres, how many horses, the maximum of the horses they can have off of that, but, um
What would that be?
That's what I was just looking up. Large farm animals. So it's three acres for the first horse. So, and then you need two acres for every horse after that. So you can have six total horses. That's it. That's all that that land, based on our ordinance, will allow you to have, okay? When it comes to large farm animals, so you have three horses and three cows, those are all large farm animals. So you can have six horses, then come back and say, well, I want six cows as well. It's just based off of a small farm animal or a large farm animal. So six large farm animals on that property.
How many small animals? Goats, chickens, can they just appear sometime?
I can tell you
It's not about my property value.
So, small farm animals. So for the first three acres, except for chickens, because chickens for some reason have a waiver for everything.
Unfortunate.
So basically it's one acre for everyone, so there's thirteen. They can have thirteen small. Okay, and then of course chickens, they can, you know, everybody can, they can have five chickens, so.
But if they have the horses, they can't have the smaller animals.
No, they can.
In addition.
Yeah.
It'd be a combination of large and small.
Right. That's what I'm concerned.
No, they, so based, based on this, that property, you could have six large, you have thirteen small on thirteen acres.
Doesn't that have to be one hundred feet from each property?
So, so now, now we're talking about the storage of certain items, okay? So manure storage has to be a hundred feet away from all property lines, okay?
But a horse produces fifty pounds of manure every day.
Yes, they have to train it to keep a hundred feet away from property lines when it drops.
But that all still runs into our
So, yeah, so y'all are asking questions, right? These are the things that come out on this board, on the site plan. But if, but if you want to learn about it, it is in our ordinance, which is online. It's under sec, uh, Article five, which is supplemental. And it's on page fifty one. So if you want to prepare yourself, if this happens to pass next month, okay? Like I said, it has to pass here first. And it goes back to site plan. You're all going to get a letter saying the exact same thing that you got for this one. You can prepare yourself and say, hey, and then they can make conditions or whatever.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
And approvals, so what would happen is this, if, if this passes this board in September, then goes to the planning board in October. If either this board or the planning board approves the, approves the variance here and then the plan by the planning board, there are things that those boards can do to put some restrictions around this, such as restricting the number of animals, potentially increasing the setbacks. So your concerns, um, maybe even if there is an approval, may be addressed by those boards down the road. So I would encourage you, if you have those, one, educate yourself on the variances ahead of time. So you know what's permitted and what's not. And then two, voice whatever the concerns may be to this board before they vote next month. And then if there's approval to the planning board the month after that, so that some of those concerns can be heard and maybe used in an approval process if there, if there is, not to say it will be approved, but if it is, these boards are able to put, like I said, certain breaks around projects to minimize effects on neighbors in the community.
I mean, the, the one thing, I mean, I know a bunch of you are like, the best scenario would be not for it to get approved. But you always got, you know, you expect, the world is hope for the best, respect for the worst. Have a plan, you know? If you, if you want to come speak, you know, if this happens to get approved, you want to come speak. Build yourself up, say, hey, you know what? You had a drainage problem. Well, why can't they put some kind of a containment area, underground drainage, you know, so it's kept way up there? And none of those flies, none of that smells getting down to my place, okay? Opposed to, everything flows down, I'm going to put a containment area right on your back property line. So no matter what, there's going to be a pond of that stuff sitting there before it drains out, you know? Just tell them, this is what I want.
Get waters, water out to there and electricity. Would that be off of their house?
Those are all questions for the planning board. They can, they can, yeah, they'll, they'll be able to address all that. Not that Alan can't, because he knows everything, literally, but those are the things to the planning board, you have to worry about drainage. You could say, hey, board, if you're going to approve this, maybe consider making the aspect, put a ditch or a drainage, whether something in here to stop the flow of this from our property. Those are the things that those boards can help manage if they're going to be in approvals.
That's not an uncommon request, right? You, if you're public, your neighborhood, you're allowed to make those. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Does it have to be approved by both boards or does one or the other, or both, or neither, like, or not either, but you know, like, if the planning board agrees and, you know, the other board says no, is it a no? Like, how does that work?
So, so it's this board right now, right?
Right.
So it's a, you, the use isn't allowed, so this board has to say yes or no before it can go back to the planning board. If this board says no, forget it. That's not going to happen, no matter what, because the, and the planning board won't do anything further.
Okay.
Anybody else want to come to the front and come in?
If, if you're going to speak, try to talk to the microphone if you can, so we can record this. It's just, make it easier down the road.
Please.
Odeon. Mr. Chair.
Chair, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Bill Plutton. I live at four fifteen Cumberland Head. The proposed project backs up to my backyard, closer to the Zero Seneca location. I understand that the applicant has to prove the three standards for the variance. I can't really comment on the first, but, uh, the second, use to be authorized by the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. Uh, the third one, the hardship is unique to this parcel and is not general throughout the zoning district. The deciding matters referred to the ZPA, the board shall give consideration to the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. That neighboring person's property will not be adversely affected. I feel this project should not be allowed for so many reasons. This is a residential area. I understand that there's a, an open parcel of almost fourteen acres back there. And some have said, oh, that was never really part of Champlain Park. It was. It's Zero Seneca. It looped around to was the playground area now. That was all part of it. The developers went bankrupt. That never got developed. It never got finished. The playground, ball field, tennis courts, all that area donated to town. A park starts. That thirteen acres changed hands a few times over the years. Part of Champlain Park. And I, actually, no question now, since it's attached to, uh, twenty five Genesee, over there, that's part of Champlain Park. But it's a residential area, you know, it's, it's homes, it's families, it's kids, it's playgrounds. It's not like Four On and Dogga. And Four On and Dogga is not in my backyard. It's not next to me. Four On and Dogga was part of the old Cook Barn. Then it went to Lapeer Trudeau. That property, that parcel went all the way across, the connector road divided it. It went all the way across to the other side of three fourteen, where Landville's building Deerfield Estates. So, the name escapes me, but there was a gentleman from the lot that bought that before Titherington, had plans of putting houses in there. It was never part of Champlain Park, which has ordinances, or, yeah, ordinances. And I know we're talking apples and oranges when it comes to ordinances. But the whole idea to the ordinances, they were in effect forever and people followed them. You don't see other stuff popping up in there. You know, there's no big garages being built, people working on race cars. Everybody just got along and so when that plan fell through to put the houses in there, that fifty six acres, that's everybody's referring to as Four On and Dogga. Titherington, they fell through because of concerns for the sewer lines from Rocky Point to the sewer plant at the first entrance to the park. That all fell by the wayside. Titherington came in and how, probably because of the sale of one of Lapeer's old farmhouse, uh, they had to go in through On and Dogga to access the property. So, some of my concerns, and we've been there before. Uh, the odors, the noise, the insects, rodents. It's all going to be a problem. It was a problem twelve years ago with the Civil Adventure back there. You know, horses, and I have packets that I'd like to provide to each member, um, just backing up some of the stuff that I'm saying here.
Okay.
You know, horses, one horse, twelve tons of manure and the waste bedding that's in the stalls. That's twelve tons per horse per year. Two and a half gallons of urine per horse per day. This is all going into the ground. Flies, mosquitoes, rodents, more rodents. There's going to be mice and there's going to be rats back there between the bedding and the food and the manure. You're going to see predators. You're going to see, uh, coyotes, fox, raccoons, possum. They're going to concentrate to that area. I mean, people's house cats are going to be bringing mice and rats all to them instead of birds. And you get a concentration of predators because of these males back there. Are we going to have issues with rabies? When you get all these animals together? When you get all these animals together, that in the wild don't usually congregate together. We're going to be drawn to that location. The, uh, the manure has to be processed. It's very detailed on how you have to process that, whether it be on a cement pad, with a roof, without a roof, or a tarp, how much room you need. The hundred-foot setbacks, you know, just how big does that thirteen acres turn into if there's a hundred-foot setbacks all around it? Knocks it down to about six acres? So now you're going to have a barn, horses, which is one acre or two acres for the first, one acre for each additional. If that's knocked down to six acres, where is all this going to go? And how much room are those horses going to have? It's going to be a mud pit back there. And again, it was mentioned, you know, does it end with four horses? Are there going to be more? Uh, we went through this and I don't know, a few people are familiar with the same type of project that was attempted several years ago, you know, with thirteen buildings on thirteen acres and pigs and goats and. So another question is, uh, was Circa, Circa, were they advised of the project, the State Environmental Quality Review Act? And I think they were, because it came back as an unlisted action. What does that mean, unlisted action? Are they not interested in this project or?
Well, the seeker is performed by the town.
Okay, I I don't know, that's that's why I'm asking. And what is it that you would do to satisfy that?
So so the town, and and this is to the planning department, okay, not us. Um, because this is a site plan review, they're going to do, they're going to end up doing the seeker first, it's more than likely, and then give us a copy of it, because they have more detail than we do. Ours is more just administrative. But they're going to, unless it's close to something, some of the agency's responsibility, so unless it's right next, somebody who lives on the lake, next, next, next to the lake, right? So they got on record, which means there's a D E C who are going to be wanting to be involved, okay? Or it's close to some historical site, and you have to state a historical site who's going to be involved. So if there's no involved agencies, then they don't have to send to anybody. Everyone goes there, they make the review, they give it to the board, explain to the board, and then the board makes the decision. If there's somebody involved in it, now we're going to send all the information to that involved agency. They would come back and say, we will, usually what they do is they come back and say, we'll let you be the governing authority, but here's our comments, and that's usually what happens.
Okay, well, going back to environmental, um, some of you are familiar with the head, others maybe not, but the water tower is right in the center of the peninsula out there. It's the highest point gravity for that water to run to everybody, the water tower. The head is a peninsula, and if you can picture a roof, the highest point, everything runs to the lake. Doesn't matter what side of the lake you're on, everything runs to the lake. Uh, we've got soil studies in here from Clifton Soil, Cornell Cooperative Extension, listing what soils are out there. Can I approach that, Matt?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is the park over here, this is the old McDonough farm. They've got a three-foot wide ditch that's about three or four feet deep running through that, trying to, because I believe the town owns a very small stretch, uh, probably six or seven houses up from me, where they can access the back of that. If you go down to Zero Seneca, could you just back up to that picture where you, yeah? What this picture is showing, and I have it on my phone, actually, is this house right here is one Seneca. The town knows that there's there's water problems, because the town came and put a tarmac berm the length of one Seneca to stop water from going into his basement. Little further down are the the storm, the sewer grates. Goes down to the length of Iroquois, because that's where the water runs. There's two, uh, drains at the end of Iroquois, go under the ground at the Cumberland Head Road, and dump into the lake out of an eighteen-inch, uh, drain line. That's part of the deeded right-of-way, so that the residents of Champlain Park have their section of beach that dumps there. Just from this last storm, I have, my ditches are full of water from this last storm on Friday. So several houses where this proposed project is is wanting to go sit between it and the lake. Everything is going to run, and once the manure gets wet, it's considered contaminated, it's polluted, that's going to leach into the ground. You know, my concern is not only, uh, uh, surface water, it's groundwater. My slump pump has not stopped running since Friday, trying to to get rid of all the waters coming down and through the ground into my basement. You can see it out there, it's it's been a problem for years. The, uh, the town playground out there, the park, that's always flooded. I have, I didn't put these in my packets, but this is just the storm from Friday. You want to see it closer, I'll show them to you.
I actually did that way, so I know.
So this is the playground, and look at all the standing water from just Friday. This is the property in question with a stream running through it, coming right back to the playground. So all that water is moving, it's always moving. And again, if you can just imagine the the center of the head being like a roof, and everything is running down to the lake, it's coming right between us. You know, speaking of that drain, there's also a drain, i- i- it's not just unique to that side. At the first entrance where the sewer plant is, is also a right-of-way for the the park residents who are out on the beach. There's another huge storm drain there, and the water was gushing out of both of them after this past storm. Uh, our beaches have been closed twice this year that I'm aware of due to blooms and eucalyptus. That's the town beach and the, uh, the city beach, and it's all dumping into Leacham Play. So the, that site is at one thirty-nine, one hundred and thirty-nine feet above sea level. I'm at a hundred and nine, I got hammered by runoff from that property. Well, that's that's thirty feet higher than my property, I get hammered by it. And it just, it seems that we are getting more frequent and more severe storms. It seems like when we get a rainstorm, we get a rainstorm. So I I just don't feel that this this project is conducive to the health, and safety, and general welfare of the community. It would definitely change the neighborhood. In my packet, I got letters from a couple realtors that, in their opinion, a project like that is going to devalue the surrounding properties. With the noise, the smells, the water issues. Our homes, the lake, the beaches, all be negatively affected by polluted runoff, uh, both in the form of groundwater and surface water. I just, I feel that the board needs to protect the people surrounding this project and say, no, it can't happen. Uh, I know that the zoning laws have changed. When Four On and Dogga, uh, was developed and started out as the, uh, the horse farm, zoning allowed that then. Zoning has since changed and become a little bit more restrictive. I just, I don't think this is a good idea.
Okay.
Can I give you my packets or?
Sure, you submit those to our faculty, and we'll be able to distribute it.
So I thought there was going to be five here tonight, so.
I'll save them for next week, or next week. And I'll have fun, and then I'll have you next one, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this matter?
Am I allowed to clarify anything, or should I wait till next month? I I just, I I I just want to make sure. I don't know what I'm allowed to do.
If you want to make a comment, you can make a comment. We still have the public portion of the meeting open, so.
Okay, I wasn't sure what what the rules are, thank you. Hi, so I'm actually Karen. Um, I do want to say this is not the same project that it was prior. That was my sister, she also doesn't. My sister and I are way different, um, especially when it comes to agriculture. Actually, I've worked at Minor Institute, um, I'm very well versed when it comes to nor management and handling off all that wonderful stuff. Um, I have worked very closely on how I'm going to handle manure, because that is my big, one of my big things. I I'm a horse person. I do not want any other creatures or anything else out on that property. I do want to make that clear. I do not want anything else but horses, and that includes donkeys. I am fine if I had a variance that said horses only on that, and that includes, you know, no chickens, no nothing. I solely want horses. And once again, I would also want to use it along with, um, the ordinance. I love erasing code ordinance. I actually wish everywhere had three acres for the first horse and two acres for the other. If, you know, horses do take up space. Um, the other thing is if we go back to the math, my horses, um, because some of them are actually minis. So guess what? It would be a death sentence to let them be anywhere here. That would kill them. Um, I actually do not want my horses to go past here. And, uh, so basically, all of this is going to stay untouched. I do not want anything further. I want everything where I can see to make make sure. Um, also, I heard someone mention flies. There's actually a lot of cool products out there to do fly management. Once again, horse person, we hate flies, just one of the the big things. Um, they're called predator. You put them in the manure. You can also feed your horses supplements to actually make it so flies can't live in the manure. Mind you, this is all safe for the environment, it's not going to affect anything. Um, so predator is one of them, that will completely eliminate any fly issues. I'm going to use it. I could also put my horses on a supplement, but then that would destroy the predator as well. So from my experience with, um, in consulting, Karen Lassell from Minor Institute, she recommends the predator route. My manure system is going to be a three-part compartment. So the way that it goes, fresh manure goes in the first bit. Mind you, there will be PVC pipe within each of these spots. And what you do is you push air through, the air helps it decompose faster, reduces smell. I mean, agriculture has, my sister went about it the wrong way. I don't know how anyone can just let things fester the way that she did. I'm not going to lie, that was done completely wrong. There was no system to it, no planning. Just imagine something arising in the middle of the night, basically, and constructed. I, um, as you guys saw at the planning meeting, the barn, it looks nice. Um, if there were further ideas, I would be fine making it even match, you know, uh, with vinyl siding and all that other stuff, not afraid to make it look as if one with the neighborhood. Um, everything that, uh, I've been doing and researching, um, you know, there's only three properties that are zoned R-three that can even house horses with the at with the zoning ordinance, and that's Palaran's. I can't remember, but his property has like, I think, six or seven acres. Um, ours, which is like the thirteen, fourteen acres, and then Titherington's, which is the fifty-six something acreage. And those are the only properties in R-three that can even, if it was allowed, could even house horses. Um, you know, and it's one of those things where I just want to bring my horses home. It would save me a ton of money. Uh, and on top of it, my kids would be ecstatic. Um, but you know, at the end of the day, my whole plan is to make it as if they're not there. I want to make it so, you know, you wouldn't see it, no one's going to see it. It's just going to be that one structure. So yes, you would be able to see it from the park. I could always plant the trees that Titherington has all around, that has something that has come up and that we are currently discussing. I could just do that as well around our entire perimeter and put those privacy trees up if people are like worried about that. Um, you know, but all my closest neighbors who would be directly affected, they are excited, they, um, they're for it, so they didn't come tonight because I told them, no worries. No worries, you don't need to come tonight, uh, but maybe I should have had a few of them tag along.
Well, again.
Yeah.
We're not doing anything tonight on this matter, we are just.
Yeah.
We had it advertised, so we had to have the open meeting, that's all.
But, yeah, I I'll definitely, um, you know, if it makes everyone feel better, I can bring out even more detailed plot and understanding of the manure system that I'm going with to help alleviate that stress. Um, yeah, I I, and like I said, I don't want any other critters there. I don't understand them, that's not me. They're too, not not my thing, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Rob Ray, I live at four twenty-three Cumberland Head Road, adjoining a couple of the other houses. It'll be right behind there, and I'm not going to go on, uh, I think that they covered it. I share their concerns, and with what I have heard, I haven't heard anything that really has changed my mind. I'm opposed to what it what it is right now, uh, and I just want to go on record with that.
Thank you.
I just want to kind of bring it all together. Um, there's been a lot, a lot of things discussed, so.
Got to state your name first.
Oh, Joey Mochell Griffin. So even though you guys are down lower than we are, we also have drainage issues behind my house. I have four thirty-nine, and my neighbor right next door, Mary Ann Green, she sent a letter, hopefully you all got it. And so we have the same issues. We have the water, we have, you know, it's like, looks like a little river going in, then there's a big pond. And she gets ponds on hers, I get ponds on mine. I have two sumps in my basement, and I had a lot of work done when I first moved in the house. I dug up the whole back wall and put in a whole system to direct the water, that's how much water was coming. So if it brings anything with it, it's going to go into my house, into my two septic, uh, two sump pumps. And, uh, that's a lot to deal with, in my, as I call it, my shoebox on the lake. So we all talk about property values, it's been a popular subject just here, and it's a popular subject with this. So as you can imagine, you know, if it's goes awry, it's not going to help. I kind of wonder why they changed the zoning. They probably changed the zoning because they didn't want anything like this to happen again. So I'm wondering what the possible differences are that makes it okay? Once they've spent all the years, uh, with it as an R-three, why is it okay now? And why did they change it to an R-three if they're only going to, um, change it again and say, oh, yeah, okay, sorry, we made a bad decision? What if there's an issue? You know, what if there's more horses? What if there's problems with the manure? Hopefully not, I mean, she sounds, she's pretty well versed in it, but still, what if there are other issues that come up? What's the recourse? What's the recourse? What, what steps do we have to follow? Who do we have to talk to? Um, and, and that's a big, big if hanging over, you know, the heads of people who live adjacent to her property. Um, is there any setup for inspections? I mean, when you have something like that, how did, how does, how does the town know? How does the town know that she's living and doing within? You just wait for someone to complain, or is there a setup for, um, inspections so that we can stay on top of it?
So answer that question, no, there's no set up inspections. If it's a single-family home, single-family thing, we don't inspect you. Only in commercial businesses or multifamily businesses do we inspect on a, inspect on a regular basis.
So you wouldn't take.
So I don't call you up and say, you've been in your house for five years. Try to become inspected.
No, no.
You guys wouldn't want us to do that, so we're not allowed to.
Farm or?
I don't inspect any farms.
Okay. I, I saw a question I had.
But you're, the other, before that, you asked a question. So also, if it got approved and stuff happens, so it gets approved, and they have six horses, and all of a sudden, seventh horse shows up. If we have to drive by and see it, then yes, we can address it. More than likely, it's gonna be one of you guys who are gonna call us and say, they got seven horses on the property. I'm pretty sure they only have six. Now it's a customer complaint. Now we're gonna go out and address it right there.
I, I was just asking all the questions trying to.
Yeah, I just wanted to answer, you know, how it normally goes.
And, and I, my last, uh, thing is, how do you contain them? I mean, I've heard no talk about the fence or how that whole situation is gonna be handled. Is it gonna be a pretty white fence? That would help, probably.
There was on the planning board. We had a picture of the fencing that was called.
Yeah, that's planning.
That's site. So when you, when you talk about the site, how's the site gonna look? How's the site gonna function? It's gonna, it's not them. It's the other board that you guys haven't been invited to yet. And, and like I said, if it doesn't pass this one, we won't ever get invited 'cause we have new issue, you know?
So basically, I'm just backing up.
No, you're bringing up concerns.
Yeah.
But your concern is basically, for her ears, I mean, she doesn't have to be in the audience right now, but you know, normally, she'd be sitting right here. She would've went through and presented everything she just talked about ahead of time.
So she'll do that probably next time.
Yep, and then you guys would have your public hearing. So you could hear what she has to say, then you can ask your question 'cause she may generate more questions.
Yes, okay. So that was my summary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanted to touch on what was said earlier there, um, about the three properties. Going back to four on the dogga, again, that was under different zoning ordinances. It was different.
It's agricultural. Yeah.
And the, the Pellerin property that was mentioned, that was the old B.C. Welder business that had been there for, Oleg Kovar. We've been there forever.
She was just stating about the number, the amount of square footage that you would need to our acreage goals. That's all.
But if they had a venture like that, they would also have to appear. You know, and, you know, don't wanna keep comparing to the venture before, but again, that was, uh, left a, 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 a bad taste on my mouth, a foul smell on my nose, and it came to threats of appearance to get, to rectify that situation out there. So, you know.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few of my own over here that I need to read. So first off, I wanna make a point of the record that the board members did receive some products as well as emails, as well as letters. It all came to you that arrived at this meeting, and we forward those to you. So just wanna acknowledge that you guys actually received those, correct?
Yes.
I'm gonna, if you're planning on reading letters that were submitted with public hearing, because there's gonna be a public hearing next time, hopefully when more of the board members are here, I'd rather have those saved and read then for the members that will be voting.
I don't agree with that.
If anybody disagrees with that.
Okay, so, so I'll just.
Just say who they're from.
Exactly. So I, so I got one from Maureen Gregory at four thirty-one Cumberland Head Road, and I've got one from Mary Ann Kirby. And then, of course, we have Debbie Blake that's came in. And what was the other? Yeah, and we have a letter from the Paset Realty. Might be a couple of others.
We should have one from Michael and Seuss McGauley. I hand deliver to you.
That's in our.
Yeah. Do you want my, do you want a copy?
No, we have it, right?
Yeah. And I also included the two letters that we wrote the last time we went through all of this.
No, no, we have them.
You do.
And this, these right here, we got today. The ones prior, we've already got it, and we've already given them.
Okay.
I didn't wanna go through fifteen different names. I just wanted to make sure. If someone calls you up tonight and says, did they say that? Yes, we got a couple of them. But they will all be read in next month.
Okay.
When we hopefully have five people sitting up here.
All right.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and move on to the next one.
Okay.
So we have appeal number two-three-two-six, Shanda Co., twenty-four Bear Street.
So these are in the audience?
I'm, I'm Reverend Daniel Shanda.
Okay.
I'm her stepfather.
Have a seat. They're gonna go through and present everything, and then we'll turn it over.
There's a used variance. It costs to be allowed to construct an L-shaped deck on the home, which is an expansion to a three-story, non-conforming use and not allowed in the T-five commercial district. We have Hannafords up here, the Bear Street, the three in front here, twenty-four the Bear is at the end over here. The T-five district. There's an aerial view of the home. This one here. And this is the view of today from the street facing the bear. There's a door here and a porch over here. And this is the plot plan provided by Mr. Lucic Cho.
Okay, so we're gonna turn this over to you. Can you please, uh, speak to the microphone and tell us who you are and your relationship?
My name is Kelly, and I'm Shanda's stepfather. We actually live on seventeen Bear Street. And, uh, so if you could go back to the pic, the front picture of the house?
Yep.
Yep, that one right there. So the proposed deck would be from around the door to the stairs. Just, just past the door, like an L shape.
Okay, so is that coming out any further than the porch is there now?
No, than, than this porch right here? No.
Can I just say that real quick, before I continue, um, because it's only a three-member board, I think you've been advised of this, but they will have to vote unanimously to approve this.
Correct.
If they vote you down, they vote the project down, you can't come back without a significant change. So I just wanted to advise you that on the record. If you still wanna continue, that's fine. Um, but just as long as you acknowledge that you understand that.
Yep, I, I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's, and, and the thing is that and it's not every house in the street. There's probably sixteen, fifteen houses on the street. Almost every house has a front deck or front porch or whatever. Um, so I don't think it's unreasonable to, um, put a little, uh, deck on the front of her house so she can get in the front door. Now, this, this front door used to have a small deck. It, it was one of those maybe four foot by four foot decks, and it just had a set of stairs. Um, this will be coming down, this part, this whole section right here. But just, just, um, these stairs right here are, um, very unsafe 'cause the, I don't know if you can see, but the, the, the top step, you have to, you have to go up quite a bit to get into the door.
Jeff, to clarify, so the, not the steps that we referred to, the deck behind it on the driveway side, the new deck extend all the way to that doorway as well?
No. It'll go probably, I don't remember what the measurements were, but just to this door right here, maybe a foot past this door.
So five feet, something like that?
Going, going this way?
Yeah.
I think it's, it's like six feet.
Six feet out, but I'm talking past the, the front corner of the house. You're gonna go probably four to five feet behind that.
From, going that way?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, it's probably better if you show the plot plan.
Yes.
So the question's, okay, here, how far is it coming to the right of the house?
Six feet is what it should show.
It's going six feet out.
Okay, so I'll print it. How far is the existing one? Do you know? Same distance, or is it a little bit shorter, or a little bit longer?
I would say it's a little bit longer.
Okay, so you're actually shortening up that side?
Correct. So the, the other, the other porch that's existing probably comes out, I would say, probably eight feet.
You said that whole porch is gonna come down?
Yes.
Is there a door that's there now? Is that gonna be become a wall?
That's, yeah, that's, that's already a wall.
Okay.
Um, the, they moved the door from here to here.
So there's no reason for that porch.
Correct.
That's what's listed in the kitchen renovations. That's where the doorway had moved.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So then the, the distance to the front setback? Does it have thirty-three feet, seven inches to that deck? How it's supposed to be? Are you thinking, um, the front setback?
Yeah, what about it?
Is that where he's supposed to be? Is that?
There is, there is, for residential, there is no front setback. Or it's not. That's why, that's why we're doing a use.
Okay.
So it would be, do, do you feel thirty-three points? Seven feet is appropriate in that neighborhood.
And that's, that's from the front of the yard, like the, the street is down here.
Right.
So this is, I measured from the, the, where the grass is to where the deck would be.
You wanna open up the public hearing portion of the meeting? Anybody here like to speak to that matter? Just, open up the mic and state your name.
Uh, Gina, excuse me, Gina DeRocher, uh, twenty-two Le Bear, bordering as the deck. Um, so if I understand, we're about six feet out from that door. What, um, at that point, um, how far from the property line?
Eleven feet, six inches is what they're showing.
Yeah, that's what, yeah. So the house is seventeen.
Doesn't actually change. It's actually gonna be closer to, it's gonna have a little bit more room, I believe, than what he has now.
Correct.
Well, the driveway, obviously, as you drive in, the closer to that corner where this is proposed is where they park, where you pull in.
Right, the, the driveway is right here. This section right here.
Yes, so where would you stop parking? Here?
I think the plan is to, yes, I think the plan is to, uh, do the, the driveway up to this point. I think that they're going to put like, uh, either the step here or like, uh, on a, on the corner of the deck so that they can get up to the deck from where the cars are parked.
But you would not be able to park here?
No, no, I don't think.
Why don't you come back to the microphone, sir? We have questions, and you direct the questions to the board, not to him, sir. Direct your answers to the board, not to her, okay? Thanks.
Okay, so really what I'm interested in, um, the current situation is the driveway is the property line. So as soon as they come off the driveway, they're actually on our yard. Um, and could you switch back to the, uh,
Picture?
actual picture? Um, so they're about as far parked as they can, um, I'm gonna step away. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Um, so this is us right here. This right here is also the property line. A building has been, um, pre-existing to our ownership is there, but I mean, we own right up to it. I just don't wanna see a situation where now we need to put our driveway over here 'cause we think we own over here. We do not. There's actually also some sort of clean out or water shut off that, um, they're driving over right now and couldn't be paved over. I wouldn't wanna see that happen.
No, I, I agree.
We've, um, you know, been told of their intentions to repave that driveway. Um, and I just don't want it to be accommodating this new deck and moving farther over.
What the, what the, uh, I think what the idea is, not, not to go any further that way, but to, when they do the repaving of the driveway, 'cause they have two cars. So they're, they wanna get rid of this sidewalk right here and, and pave towards this way. Probably, probably up to about there. I don't know. Adam usually, uh, maybe a little bit further. You can kinda see where the tracks of his truck, where he parks his truck usually.
Yes.
Where, and Shanda usually parks her car over here. But there's no plan on, on going into the other.
Nothing going to towards her property line.
And is there any requirement for setback on the sides?
Not because this is a commercial property now. So the, what, when that used to be a R2 district, there were setbacks. That's why, that's why they're here tonight, 'cause those setbacks went away when that became a commercial district. So you're not supposed to have residential houses, so all your houses are in there. So anybody who wants to do anything in that neighborhood now, a deck, you know, porch, whatever, you gotta come and do the exact same thing.
Because we're commercial.
Because now there's no commercial. So everybody in there is now a pre-existing non-conforming parcel.
Can I ask why it was changed from residential to commercial?
Town center.
Yep, so what they're doing is, you know, fifteen, twenty years from now, they want the town center to look a, look a certain way. So you change the, uh, zoning for it in order to get to that point in ten or fifteen years.
Okay.
So, so now you guys are the only residential strip in the center of town, right?
Right.
What they refer to see is all those single-family homes gone, businesses in there with apartments and stuff above them, is what they're, would hope.
Okay.
I mean, things like that right there is what they're, they're hoping would be the next level outside the town center. Your single-family homes, your yards, this kind of stuff. For this whole area right in there, there wouldn't necessarily be yards. There are apartments, condominiums, you know, this kind of things, you know? People who just wanna walk around. They don't wanna own vehicles. That's what they're trying to get just the town center right there for. We'll, we'll see in ten, fifteen years if they actually change the zoning back a different way, but that's what they're doing now.
I'd better be here.
That was my concern.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we can close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Board members have any comments or questions that they would have?
Mr. Chairman, just wanna let you know this did go down to the county. They were unable to, uh, have a quorum, so therefore. We do have a seeker due for this.
That's right.
I do have one question. Um, you mentioned that most of the houses in that area have porches in the front of the house. Are, uh, it looks like from that picture, actually, this house is further back. Is that the case?
It is. It's, I wouldn't say it's a, a considerable distance back, but it is further back. Um, from what I understand is there's, um, three or four houses on this side of the street that used to be located up near, um, not with your block, but the other restaurant up in that area.
Anthony's.
Anthony's. It used to be in that area, and they moved them, they moved these houses to this area.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I, and I think, like, the house on the right where the, the two windows are, that's, uh, like a porch. It probably, the porch is probably the distance that the other, the other houses go back.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
All right. All right, so is, uh, who's doing the seeker?
Got it right here. A short one. Uh, will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation?
None the small.
None the small? The proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of the land?
None the small.
Proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
None the small.
Proposed action have an impact on? Proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area. The proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure or mass transit by kind of walkway. Proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation. Or renewable energy opportunities.
None the small.
The proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies, public or private water treatment for utilities. The proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological or aesthetic resources. Will proposed action result in an adverse change in natural resources like wetlands or water valleys?
No, none there.
The proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage. Proposed action create a hazard to an environmental resource or human health.
So, somebody needs to declare a negative seeker. And show hands and roll top vote on that.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion, Amelia, Melanie Marr.
Yes.
Now to do the balancing test, which is not easy to, cannot realize reasonable returns substantial, of course, shown by capital financial evidence.
Doesn't apply since it's, I mean, you, you can make that assumption, that determination, because it's already a residential neighborhood.
Alleged hardship is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of district or neighborhood, and it's just your single-family house there. And the requested variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and I was, look and say that it's actually going to improve the. And the alleged hardship was, I don't believe was being self-created, so I would find those manners. So, somebody would have to grant a use variance at this point in time.
Mr. Chair, before you vote, I would recommend that this is an approval of a use. With the stated setbacks as on that plan.
Here with the condition of that side, existing side porch come down.
Put that in there, Donna.
Hey, hang on. What was the, about the setback?
The setbacks as shown on the drawing.
Must be here too.
Okay.
And that the side porch is going to be removed.
Okay, and that it's eleven feet from the.
Eleven feet.
Eleven six is what was on the plot plan.
To the side yard?
Yeah.
Uh, show hands.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, Roger.
Okay.
Then roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Melanie Marr.
Yes.
And that was a vote.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
You too.
Now, we're into twenty-three, twenty-seven.
Onto appeal number two-three-two-seven. Anyone here for that one?
Yep, all three of them. Who wants to come up, sit in the front?
Go ahead.
He's the owner of the property.
I just want to put the same, same, I guess, warning on the record for this project, that it will require you to be anonymous, hopefully, in the next month.
Steel is LVO Property LLC, doing business as Truck movers, located on ninety-nine Trade Road. It's a use variance, request to be allowed to keep a truck terminal, distribution facility, which is, which is not allowed, which is not allowed use. In an I industrial district. We have ninety-nine Trade Road, at the county jail here, come down Trade Road, Luck Brothers. This here is the building at ninety-nine Trade Road. It's located in industrial district, there's a wetland, which is not part of the property, but not really bothered the business. There's another aerial view, this here is the property in question. There's one view from today, another view from today, and a survey map, or a tax map. And then we've been asked to include these pictures along with this middle.
All right, Scott, yours?
Well. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, I'm Scott Allen, uh, surveyor of the property, uh. Uh, representing and working for Mr. Hummel, the buyer of the property, this is John Hummel, and this is Robert Steele, the owner of the property. So, in any commercial transaction like this, um, the, uh, title insurance people, the lenders. Um, want to, um, typically see a letter from, uh, sound, and probably it's done so. A letter certifying that everything needs zoning, well, we discovered in this case that we weren't. Couldn't quite, couldn't quite get that, uh, that letter, so, we're kind of, uh, you know, doing a procedural correction here and, uh. Coming back and getting an after the fact, asking for an after the fact, um, variance, I guess. Now, at this point in time, based on the existing zoning, we're asking for variance to allow this. Uh, use that doesn't really fall in the category, uh, I guess. At least in interpretation by the zoning department, it doesn't fall under the category of warehouse, warehousing and distribution. So, uh, to make sure we have all our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, we're asking for the use variance to permit. This relatively low impact use that, that occurs out there, so, um. I think at this point, I'll open it up to questions.
What is your business actually do?
So, we, uh, and the picture showed brand-new trucks, those trucks are manufactured in Mexico, Texas, Ohio. We stack them together, we bring them up here, and then we unstack them. And then drive them singly to the dealerships, to the final dealerships, so our freight is trucks.
So, you're actually a distribution center almost?
Right, yeah, yeah, they're all brand-new trucks, they don't sit there for, the trucks you see there today will be different, next week, in the week after, the day after.
Do you do any updating to them or modifying or anything?
The only thing that we do is, uh, in order to transport them, we have to remove their rear axles, so that the wheels float freely.
Right.
And we put those axles back in, and, um. You know, we have some temporary airlines that we remove, we don't really do a whole lot to the trucks, we just have with our equipment that we use to transport the trucks.
It should be, I mean, as you're saying, it should have happened, this use has, um, been in place since, throughout the thousand thirteen years. I guess now is we're, you know, looking to get a transfer of the property, and discovered that we're not, um, apparently compliant, so.
So, as you know, it is part of the balancing test, it's the financial aspect of it all, and you want to just review that quickly with us?
Yeah, sure, we submitted a, um, narrative, uh, attached to the application. Um, but, um, you know, basically, um. You know, without the variance, um, the, the property is, is virtually, uh. You know, of no value, so, so we, we think, um, it's proven there, it'd be a reasonable lack of, um. Return if the variance is not there.
Now, did this go down to, uh, the county at all or no?
Yes, it did, Mr. Hummel made a trip.
Yeah, last week.
From St. Louis, as he did, as he did today as well.
Open up the public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to that man? Looks like we cleared everybody up, okay, so we can close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And, you know, we're looking at your. Information about two thousand dollars per acre compared as agricultural, which I guess doesn't really apply too much to that area. And your contract price were considered in more, that looks good, unique circumstances. The whole area down there is basically industrial in nature.
Let me just point this out to the board. But, there is a significant lack of financial information in this application, what they told you was, what can we do without site plan review? There are a million things they can do with this property, getting site plan review, which would be automatic, if they comply with site plan regulations, because they are allowed uses. Those are fairly simple things to show here, such as automobile repair and service is an allowed use. Why can't they do that, why can't they reasonably get a return there, with their automobile sales, business professional office, clinic. Contractor storage yard, which is what this has been for a long time, or was for a long time, my point is. You're potentially grading a variance with a very small portion of the analysis that the applicant needs to do, because. They just, they only showed you things that are permitted, not permitted with site plan review, and that's not what the test is.
A lot, a lot of those things that you just stated are things that they are actually doing there, in one form or another. I mean, they're working on vehicles, right?
But, okay, but they're, so, maybe they need to change, uh, my, my point is, they haven't showed you why they can't do any of these things from a financial point of view, so. Grading this variance without any of that, how do you say no, or the next one that comes in, and you say, you haven't given us any financial information, why you can't do any of these already permitted things? Not saying they can do it, they just haven't done it yet, that's my concern with the precedent setting thing to report, there are very easy things this property could be. Just by, just by going through a site plan review that are already permitted, they need to show you, you know, why, why can't we be either categorized? Or why can't we be a automobile repair shop, that's kind of what they're doing anyway, I think they just need to.
That, that's why I'm looking at, I said, some, fifty percent of what they're doing there is actually automobile.
Right.
And then there is a certain percentage that you're actually doing storage.
Right.
And then certain percentage, you're an industrial in, in nature, and you have offices there, because that's the way I'm looking at it.
Then, what I think is permitted is a subject to site plan review would be warehouse, warehouse distribution facility.
Yeah.
And it's a fair point with regard to the financials, but, uh, you know.
How, how is what they're, how is what they're doing different than warehouse and distribution?
That's, um, that's you have to ask the, uh.
Which, which is why Steve brought this to you, I mean, and I, I believe Scott's on this too, his request was. A determination or a variance, okay, so, if you make a determination that this is actually what we see. Your determination of the use now becomes what we make it, and that's what we're gonna put on the compliance letter.
You could determine.
If their bank says, that's not what we're, we're signed up for, you know, that's what we determine here, we determine the uses, you know, manufacturing. Warehouse, storage, whatever, so if they come back to you and say, well, no, you know, financial institution, what's this use? That's not the use you made a determination, that's why they're asking for the variance part of it.
So, if you determine they're a warehouse distribution facility, which is permitted, they don't need a variance, they would just, they need to go get a site plan review, apply for a site plan. And they'd be, everything, every box would be checked for them.
A, a lot of times the financial institution is looking for a certain word.
Right.
So, but that's up to these gentlemen right here to let you know what that is, and if they can vary from that word or not.
Yeah, so it can work for everybody.
So, yeah, the, the, the other part of this request is an interpretation, interpretation of the, that the current use. Interpretation that the current use does fall under the, uh, warehousing and distribution. And if you do make that interpretation of the use, um, as it stands now, that's, you know. Intended to continue to be, falls under warehouse distribution and, uh.
And just to clarify, exactly what they're doing is not permitted in any zone.
Not defined, it's not, it's not.
See, what they're doing doesn't fit into what, like, a neat definition the town already has, so they're asking you to say. Which it works, not can you explain that definition, but under our view of what they're doing, yeah, this does work as a warehouse distribution facility, just go get your site planned up. That's one of the things that I think they're asking you to do potentially.
It's gonna say, because, I, I think of warehousing as you get a twenty different parts and pieces and da-da-da. And you distribute them from that location, they're distributing really big pieces of equipment.
Our, our business doesn't really fit a lot of.
Yeah.
Forms that people aren't normally used to, because they're big trucks, I mean. I think the board has a more defensive position going forward with an interpretation that may be more aligned with warehouse distribution versus a variance, and then they just go get a site plan review and they're all set. If the board agrees, obviously, we're not.
I, I definitely agree with that. So, then we just take a, a motion to say that it's a warehouse distribution center? Fine with us. We would make a motion, uh, it's a warehouse.
You'd make a, you'd make a motion for interpretation, and if this board is interpreting what this business does. The operation of this business fits into the warehousing distribution facility as defined by the town, therefore, it would not need a variance.
So, will be asked this one question to attorney first, okay?
We just wanna be able to keep doing what we're doing.
Yeah, we're not.
You think of a. A target distribution center, it's got twenty thousand different pieces of material, you basically got one piece of material that they're distributing.
Yeah, in the front of the application, we checked both boxes, like number three, asking for an interpretation of zoning or.
Actually, now that you say that, I do remember that, and we also, I think if I'm. Most of the actual.
You know, there is two, just in case, like, what's the use of it?
Did you have any comment?
So, my, my question was, you know, if you make this interpretation and you find a use in there. And in our ordinance, it says that, you know, site plan review is required, then you can give a recommendation to the planning board, and because it's been there for eleven years. That you don't feel that a site plan is really necessary, but that's not your decision, it is the planning department and the planning board's decision, if they think. They need to come in for a site plan or not.
Okay. It's fine, yep.
We would appreciate that recommendation, there's, really, the building's already there, the, you know, the driveway and everything is already there, it's been there for.
Yeah, it's been serving in that capacity for eleven years.
Right, yeah.
So, then the, our interpretation, as I'm hearing it from, and left and right, person here is that. The interpretation would be that it's a warehouse distribution center or area.
Therefore, does not need a variance, and you're recommending to the planning board that. You, you don't feel that need site plan review, but the ultimate decision comes from that board and from that department?
Yes.
That's all contained in your motion, okay?
So moved.
You know what you're doing, a seeker?
Oh, we can vote on it.
Who made the motion?
Roger.
Okay, sorry. Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Melanie Marr.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Will you do a yearn?
No.
Lastly, we have appeal number two-three-two-eight, Robert Dominic, we can just support Route three, anyone here on that? If you know one here.
Okay, close, thank you. There you go.